Hello, and thank you for attending the April 22nd, 2024 meeting of the Westerville Schools Board of Education. It's really good to see all of you here tonight. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in front of the room, and printed agendas are available for our guests, or you may find at the back of the room, or you may find an agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website at Click on the "Our District" link, select "Board of Education," and follow the Board Doc's link to our current meeting agenda. There will be one opportunity to address the board before it enters into our work session. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please take the roll call?
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Will you please run us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, sorry. Thanks. Okay. I thought it was loud enough. All right. Next up, we have the really fun part, District Highlights and Recognitions. And so I'm going to call Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker and Ms. Jen Altman up to the podium.
Thank you, President Meyer and members of the Board, Ms. Hamburg and Ms. Marshall. These are our favorite days. Thank you all for being here. We have a number of recognitions we're going to do this evening. And first, we're going to start with the 2024 Winter Sports Recognition, so 23-24. And it's my great pleasure to get to acknowledge some of these great achievements of our students. So I'm going to start with the 2024 Indoor State Track Championship on March 1st at the Spire Institute in Geneva. I'd like to call up Ben Gabelmann from Westerville North to join me. Ben? Congratulations, Ben. I'm going to read a little bit about what you accomplished here. So Ben won the state championship in the 1,600-meter run. This is his second state championship win so far this year. He won the state championship in the Division One Boys' Cross-Country Individual Race at the Ohio High School Athletic Association's Cross-Country State Championships on November 4th. And we thank you for representing our school so well and all of your hard work, and we'd like to invite you up for a little recognition there. Thank you. Thanks, Ben. And while Ben proceeds, I'd like to call up Will Bowman. Will is also from Westerville North and placed seventh in the long jump and ninth in the triple jump. So thank you for your wonderful performance and congratulations. I would love to shake your hand. Thank you. Thanks, and please come on up. And as Will proceeds, I want to acknowledge Johnny Jackson. Where's Johnny? The track coach at Westerville North. Congratulations, Coach. As well as Stephanie McGeorge, Assistant Principal, who I believe is also an audience this evening. So thank you so much for your leadership. And now, moving on to Westerville Central, I'd like to call up Elijah Harris. Elijah here? I'm going to read it anyway. So Elijah had a record season at the indoor track meet. He's the state champion in two events, the high jump and the triple jump. That triple jump is an amazing thing. Well, they're both, they're all amazing things to watch. Last year, he was the state runner-up in the triple jump at the indoor state track meet. So we have something for Elijah, and we will, we will get that over. But congratulations to Elijah. Also from Westerville Central, Olivia Pace. Is Olivia here? Yeah, come on up. Welcome, Olivia. Congratulations. Congratulations. Olivia is the state champion in the 60-meter dash, making her a four-time champion in that event. And, and she's also the state runner-up in the 200-meter dash. So that's awesome. Congratulations. And then Robert Young. Robert, can you join me? Robert. Robert is the state runner-up in the 200-meter dash at the indoor state track meet, and he's also competed in the 400-meter dash where he placed seventh. So congratulations. Thank you for representing us so well. And I want to acknowledge David Memmell and Jason Loftman, the track coaches at Westerville Central. I don't know if they're here, but if they are. Okay. And then Don Sayer, the principal at Westerville Central. And then, moving on to Westerville South, students who earned top sports, top placing at the indoor track meet. I'd like to call up Alexis Roberts. Alexis Roberts. As Alexis comes up, I will share that she placed fourth place in the 60 hurdles and competed in the long jump where she placed in the 14th spot. So congratulations for all your hard work. Please come on up. And A.J. Smith. Is A.J. here with us? Yeah, A.J. Congratulations, A.J. A.J. placed fifth in the 200-meter dash. So congratulations. Please come on up and shake some hands. And I'd like to acknowledge Jimmy Gahl and Jim Gahl, the track coaches at Westerville South. Are the Galls here? Yes, thank you. And Westerville South Principal Mike Kinsey, way in the back. Thank you for supporting our students. Okay. Then next, we want to recognize two students who earned top spots at the Ohio High School Athletic Association State Swimming and Diving Championship Meet in February. And I'd like to call Madeline Bosler from Westerville North up. Madeline placed third in the 100-yard breaststroke. She also competed in the 200-yard individual medley, where she placed ninth in the state. And Madeline, who was captain of North Swim and Dive Teams, plans to study middle education at the University of Akron, where she'll be a member of the university swim team. So congratulations on all your achievements and good luck. And I'd like to acknowledge the swim coach, Matthew Phillips, at Westerville North. Is Matthew here? Congratulations. As well as Stephanie McGeorge, who's the Assistant Principal. Thank you for being here this evening. Okay. And now, I would like to invite A.J. Keir from Westerville South to join me. While A.J. makes his way up, A.J. is a freshman who placed eighth in the diving event at the state meet. So lots of, lots of great years to come. Yeah, congratulations, A.J. And I want to acknowledge Rob Dew and Emma Weiskirber, the swimming and diving coaches at Westerville South. Are they here? And Principal Mike Kinsey again, from Westerville South, way in the back. Now, I would like to, this is, boy, we've done some awesome things. There's a lot of stuff here. Now, I'd like to recognize members of Westerville North's cheerleading team and Stephanie McGeorge, Assistant Principal at Westerville North High School. So members of the cheerleading team, is there any here? Come on up. Okay, we'll just read through this so everyone knows their great accomplishments. Westerville North's cheer team placed fourth in the Division One Building category at the 2024 Ohio Association of Secondary School Administrators Cheer and Dance State Championships in March. And this is another impressive performance for the cheer and dance team. Westerville North's dance team placed first in the Contemporary and Lyrical category at last year's Cheer and Dance State Championships. So congratulations to them, too. And just congratulations to all of our student award recipients and their coaches. An incredible amount of hard work goes into all of this, we know, and we're so grateful for your commitment. So thank you. I'm going to pass it off to Dr. Nestor Baker.
And next, we'll continue with recognitions this evening. Isn't, isn't this just a wonderful evening? It's delightful to be able to applaud everyone and to recognize all those who are here this evening. So now, we're turning our attention to the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce Recognizations. The first recognition under this category is for 2022-2023 Ohio Report Card Awards. Would Mark Twain Elementary Principal Tracy White and Hoodier Elementary Principal A.J. Hoffman please come up?
Thank you so much. Congratulations. We are recognizing Mark Twain and Hoodier Elementary this evening for receiving the state's overall Five-Star Building Award. This award recognizes schools for their performance across the five rated components: achievement, progress, gap closing, early literacy, and graduation. Tracy and A.J., congratulations and thanks to you, to all of your staff, to your families and your students for your efforts to become one of the state's highest achieving schools. We are deeply proud. We also have two schools receiving the state's Momentum Award, which recognizes demonstrated improvement and achievement while also continuing to show growth. Would Heritage Middle School Principal Dr. Drew Tomlin and Blendon Middle School Principal Kendall Harris please come up? Drew and Kendall, congratulations to you and to your respective school communities, your staff, your families, your students, everyone, for earning this award under your leadership. And let's also take a moment to acknowledge the hard work that goes into achieving these kind of awards, these very special, very rare rewards. Thank you so much for what you've done. And last, but most definitely not least, would Suzanne Kyle please come up? Congratulations, Suzanne. Suzanne is our Director of the Preschool Program here at the Early Learning Center and also at Point View Elementary, and we were very pleased to learn that this program earned the state's 2024 Preschool Step Up to Quality Five-Star Award. The Step Up to Quality is a five-star tiered quality rating and improvement system. It's created to recognize and promote early learning and the development programs that meet quality standards over and above health and safety licensing requirements. Far over and above those requirements. These standards are established by the Ohio Department of Job and Family Services and the Ohio Department of Education. Congratulations, Suzanne, to you, your staff, your students, and of course, all of the families. And now, we have the opportunity to move into even more recognitions as we talk about the A+ Awards. The A+ Awards are presented twice during each school year, once in the fall and once in the spring, to employees who distinguish themselves through a single or ongoing demonstration of exemplary performance. The selection committee's decision is guided by evaluating how each nominee's actions demonstrate support of the district's mission statement, which is to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live, a willingness to go above and beyond normal expectations in support of students, and behavior consistent with one or more of the district's values, including respect, inclusiveness, community, communication, collaboration, innovation, nurturing, trust, and accountability. And we will begin this evening with Hanby Elementary and teacher Beth Dalen. Beth?
Thanks. Beth was nominated by parents Jessie Chen and Ashley Salter. The following comments were shared in the nomination from Jessie Chen. "Mrs. Dalen tries to equip her students with a global vision. She integrated the Asian culture, especially Japanese culture, into the curriculum through her everyday teaching, special events, student group projects, and field trips. This inspires students to introduce their culture to the class. My daughter was encouraged and enjoyed to present Chinese New Year and Moon Festival to her class and other classes inviting her. We are living in a global village and diverse world. Kids who are open-minded and have global vision will fly higher and make this world better. Mrs. Dalen also has the magic of motivating the kids to go above and beyond. She is so dedicated to help her students to learn more in a fun way. With Mrs. Dalen, I saw my daughter was booming. I can imagine other kids also. I really appreciate Mrs. Dalen, and she is no doubt an A+ teacher in WCS. I wish we have more teachers like her." And Ashley Salter writes in her nomination, "Mrs. Dalen has made a lasting impact on my child and most likely all the children she has taught over her career. As parents, we hear how important reading is for our children. However, we also know the struggles to instill this in our child. I thank the powers that be for placing my child with Mrs. Dalen this year. She has ignited the fire to read by matching her ability and interests. She has also provided the books out of her vast personal classroom library. Reading is only one lesson she has instilled in the children she teaches. She also shares her love of travel, history, and culture. We learn something new every day via the Dalen Classroom. Mrs. Dalen is a one-of-a-kind educator. I am forever grateful we were able to have her teach our daughter in her last year before retirement. Thank you for preparing our future generations to be successful and thoughtful individuals." Thank you, Beth.
Staying with Hanby Elementary, our next A+ Award goes to Intervention Specialist Megan Hedges. Megan was nominated by coworker Francesca Yario, who wrote, "Megan is incredibly warm, caring, and empathetic and kind. She always gives her students all of her time and more. Often, she takes lunch with students for going her own lunch hour. She cares about all students, even those not assigned to her. Her classroom is a safe haven for so many of the students at the school. She always has the time of day to make everyone feel special and cared for. She goes above and beyond what her job requires. She has the ability to work with parents and staff to support her students, and she's such a special person. As her coworker, I've personally seen her calm and teach students to help them through a tough day. Always professional, always giving up her time. She is truly a stellar employee and a superstar at what she does. She should definitely be recognized for her work." So thank you so much, Megan. Thank you.
We have another A+ Award winner from Hanby this evening, teacher Brooke Smith. Brooke? Brooke was nominated by coworker Kathy Montoro. Kathy's nomination begins with this simple message, "Brooke is amazing." She goes on to add that "Brooke has her hand in so many aspects of our school, I don't know how she sleeps. She is an excellent first-grade teacher. As a reading teacher, I'm in all of the classrooms regularly picking up my kids. Her students are always on task and working quietly. She is always working with a small group of students. She attends all of the PTA meetings and keeps the faculty informed. She is also a WEA faculty representative at large, which requires her to be at two meetings a month, plus the work she does to represent us. Brooke worked tirelessly on our very first literacy night. She had two main functions. She came up with a computer-based fluency and fitness station in the gym, and she ran a tech session for parents so that they could learn how to log on and use the various district apps like Lexia and iReady. She was my go-to person for all things tech-related for the literacy night, like putting together surveys and communicating with families. She serves on our building leadership team. Brooke is a, Brooke is a Bridges math facilitator. I often find her working away after hours. She collaborates well with other teachers and never seems bothered or put out by our interruptions in her after-school work. She has two young boys at home. I honestly don't know how she does it all, and with a smile on her face, Brooke Smith is an A+ educator."
And moving on now to McVay Elementary, we have teacher Brandy Hessness. Brandy, come on up. Brandy was nominated by parents Paige Mize and Raven Johnson. Congratulations. Thank you for being here. Paige writes that "Brandy goes above and beyond caring for our students, which made the transition so much easier with a teacher like her. She's amazing and puts so much joy in working with the little ones." And that takes a truly special person, so thank you for that. Raven adds, "Brandy's communication skills are amazing. One of the best teachers I've ever experienced for my child. Brandy is always attentive and understanding towards parents and the children. My son has learned so much," there are lots of "O's" there, "because of her. Brandy is an all-around amazing person." So thank you and congratulations, Brandy.
And again, from McVay Elementary, EL teacher Heather Lewis. Heather? Heather was nominated by coworker Evan McIntyre and parent and coworker Kate Baldwin. Evan McIntyre writes in part, "Heather Lewis demonstrates her commitment to the students' well-being and development by ensuring their preparedness to perform at a level where they can quickly integrate into their environment by achieving the communication skills necessary to succeed. Heather works diligently with each student, demonstrating compassion, patience, and kindness. She provides her students with a welcoming and inclusive environment that makes them feel respected, safe, and valued. Heather is always looking for innovative educational tools and opportunities to enhance the students' learning process and progress. Heather also provides numerous opportunities and unique learning experiences, like a yoga class, for the students at McVay, both during and outside the school day. She also provides essential support to the music department by assisting during, beforeing, and after-school with the fifth-grade musicals and the 85-member student choir. She goes above and beyond to assist students in practicing their lines, rehearsing their songs, helping with props, make up publicity, and assisting in any way possible to support the students and staff in ensuring the success of their performances. Most recently, Heather launched an after-school Girls on the Run program for McVay Elementary students. These are just some of the examples of how passionate Heather is about our community and providing fabulous opportunities for the students. Heather Lewis is an extremely valued staff member and team player who's always there to help others and to contribute to the development and success of all students and faculty and deserves to be recognized for her everyday exemplary A+ performance. Thank you for your consideration of Heather Lewis received the A+ Performance Award for Spring 2024." And Kate Baldwin writes, "My kids aren't English learners, but they still know who Mrs. Lewis is because of how involved she is at McVay. When my fifth grader was in the musical Moana, it was fun to see Heather out there pushing the boat around and getting involved in an after-school event. On a professional level, I work with Heather and always appreciate the attention to detail that she puts in. Whether she's reading a book to my kids at spooky reads night or coordinating and organizing an efficient parent-teacher conference with multiple families and interpreters, I appreciate the effort Heather puts in for all of the students at McVay." And we will make sure that she gets her award.
Also from McVay Elementary, I'd like to invite up Sarah Shepherd. Sarah was nominated by parent Bethany Scheck, and Bethany shares, let me put these on so I can get this right, that in addition to keeping a peaceful and respectful classroom, Mrs. Shepherd is always trying to teach the children practices that will help them in real life. One time in particular, as the children had been learning about checking the reliability of a source, Mrs. Shepherd used an unexpected email as a life lesson. She'd received a scam email and took the opportunity to teach the children about the dangers of trusting everything you read on the internet. They called the scammer and learned that some sources will lie and try to deceive you to take advantage of you. We thank her for using unplanned experiences to teach our kids about life. So thank you and congratulations, Sarah. Thank you.
And next, we'll recognize McVay teacher Mandy Walker. Mandy? Mandy was nominated by parent Samantha Manders. Samantha states in her nomination that "Mandy Walker has done everything possible to support my son in being comfortable and successful at school. He gets distracted and overwhelmed easily, and Ms. Walker talked to him about what would help. They decided to move him to a singular desk versus a group table. He also gets headphones to wear during crowded events. She also discussed with us the option of a school counselor for him, which he's been working with since December. He has made huge strides since all of these changes have been in place. He gets recognized often as having good behavior at school, and I've noticed a big improvement in his handwriting and attention span, and he generally looks forward to school a lot more most days. Managing a classroom of 25 kindergarteners is a ton of work, and I am so thankful to Ms. Walker for doing everything she can to support my son."
Next, we have from Genoa Middle School, Assistant Principal Stevens Smalley, nominated by parent Molly Frizzell. And so Molly begins her nomination by sharing that she has had three children so far at Genoa and feels like they are supported and safe with Mr. Smalley in command. Her nomination continues, "All three have given testimony of Mr. Smalley consistently working with students to make them feel included and part of the school's community. I myself have worked several school events with the PTSA and have found Mr. Smalley to be a great example of a role model and dedicated assistant principal. He goes above and beyond his titles to support the district's mission to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live. Mr. Smalley is able to lead in a way that the kids learn that they can be respectful and still have fun at school. Specifically, you see Mr. Smalley in the lunchroom daily. He's never afraid to lend a hand, whether it be helping with food service cleanup or helping a student with math homework. His tall, lean stature may be intimidating at first, however, once the students get to know Mr. Smalley, they quickly see he's trustworthy and gives great guidance."
to know Mr. Smalley, they quickly see he's trustworthy and gives great guidance in many situations. Mr. Smalley has a big heart and will go above and beyond to make sure students aren't being bullied. He will also make sure the bully is held accountable and understands this behavior won't be tolerated. All of my boys that have had Mr. Smalley have had great regard for his character and would agree he gets an A+ for the amazing work he does." So, thank you so much. And next, we'll recognize Intervention Specialist Sarah Devaney from Minerva Park Middle School. Sarah was nominated by student Erica Lottz. And Erica writes, "I am nominating my intervention specialist, Ms. Devaney, because she helps all the kids out regardless of race, sexual orientation, or religion. I am always appreciative of how kind, helpful, supportive, and encouraging she is to me every day. I deal with bullying and am blessed by the fact that she is always finding ways to keep me positive, feeling a sense of self-worth, and treats me as a valuable and important part of my school. She looks out for me and is a huge supporter of my academic growth that I have experienced, and I feel she is most deserving of this A-plus award for the spring semester. I would not have achieved the growth I have achieved this year in my IEP and academics without her support. Thank you, Ms. Devaney, for looking out not only for me, but all my classmates at Minerva Park Middle School and always exhibiting above and beyond the qualities the Westerville School District is known for." And next, we have from Walnut Springs Middle School, the 6th grade team of teachers that includes Amber Ferguson, Jeffrey Holmes, Maria Swasan, and Pete Wegley. Can you please come up? Congratulations. They're nominated by parent Heather Ivory. And Heather's nomination reads in part, "My 6th grade daughter gets the privilege of being on this team of teachers at Walnut Springs Middle School. Our first experience with this team of teachers was their curriculum night. They demonstrated how solid they are as a team while hosting a joint curriculum night in which they described the year and how they worked together. It was evident from that moment that my daughter was in good hands. My favorite part was that I left the meeting feeling like the transition to middle school was going to be great. My daughter was going to be challenged, supported, and learn in a fun environment. Each week, they also have a PAC meeting where the entire team of students comes together. PAC awards are given for being," and these are some of the qualities that they award, "persevere, accountable, courageous, and kind," as well as birthday cards for the students. This is such a great way to build trust and community. Their willingness to go above and beyond to keep kids engaged in their learning while also keeping it challenging is no easy task. Some examples of them being innovative in their lessons is the snowplow project. Students were challenged to collaborate with their peers and use math concepts to design their snowplows. Even more amazing, they actually got to put their plans on the snowplow. These were displayed in front of the school. Imagine how proud the students felt as they walked past those each day. And most recently, they completed a project for Black History Night. As a mama of three black daughters, I fully appreciate seeing my daughter create a project for this event. They also read articles on the benefits of recess and offered evidence to change recess in middle school. I'm certain I'm missing some of the amazing things this team does each day, but I do know the impact they've made on my daughter. She loves going to school and has learned how to advocate for herself and to be accountable for her learning. This has been made possible because of the nurturing environment her teachers have created." So, thank you so much. Thank you. Our final A-plus award this evening goes to South High School teacher Adam Pope. Adam was nominated by coworker Lauren Sefton. In her nomination, Lauren declares that she could write a novel about the things that Adam does for all of his students, but in particular, the things he does for this group of students who need so much support. She continues, "With no formal training himself, these are just some of the things Adam does. He translates all of his own documents into Arabic, French, and Spanish, which are the current languages spoken by some of the students in his class. It's not uncommon for me to receive a text from him on the weekends to brainstorm an idea or a way to make a concept or a text more accessible for all students, and then in turn, his emerging populations. He stops by my room to do the same thing. Since he teaches physical science, bio, and I teach cam and anatomy, our content vertically aligns. He will often ask, 'What do they need to know to succeed at the next level?' when planning his lessons and activities. Adam also keeps his phone open to Google Translate so that as he speaks, it translates his words for the students who don't understand spoken English but can read their primary language. He will switch between Spanish and any other language they need and go back over ideas as many times as needed so that all students get what they need. He does this in a full classroom with 30 students. He somehow makes sure in that time that every student, emerging or not, is on pace and understanding. This requires an amazing amount of observational skills and brain power. His students respect him, they love his class, and they get work done. They are learning, they are engaged, and they are learning not only English but also science terminology. They are all being prepared for state tests and their future. He sets the standard, and they respond in kind. The A-plus award is about going above and beyond. It's about the district mission statement. It's about portrait of a graduate. Adam is doing all of those things. I am proud to know him and proud to work with him. Congratulations." Now, before you all decide to leave and not stay for the rest of our meeting, I want you to know that all of our award winners will be having a picture taken out in the lobby. And see Charlie Boss out there, back there raising her hand? Follow the woman in the red shirt. And before you go, let's give everyone one more round of applause.
Okay, I just wanted to make a quick announcement that Ms. Altman, you might have seen her take off. She is going to an important family event over at Westerville South for her daughter. So, all right, moving along. And may I have a motion to approve the district credit card spending rebate report? I'm sorry? Oh, okay. All right. So, next up is the district credit card spending rebate report. Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So, we are required under Board policy and Ohio Revised Code to report annually to the Board of Education the annual credit card expenses and then any rebates earned. So, for calendar year 2023, we had a total spend of $519,498.48. We earned a rebate of $5,681.60, and that rebate percentage is right around 1.09%. And that is the report that I have for you.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, moving along, and may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April 8th, not August? So moved?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Okay, Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
I'll abstain, I wasn't here.
I'll abstain, I was not here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special session Board of Education meeting held on Monday, April 15th?
So moved? Second. That's okay.
Any questions or comments? Just congratulations again to the award winners. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And there's no public comments, so moving along. May I have a motion to approve the financial reports and investments for February 2024 and March 2024?
So moved? Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you please talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you again. So, we have two months' worth of month-end financial reports. We had only one meeting in March, and we present these at the second meeting of each month, so that probably we have two this month. For the month ending February 29th, leap year this year, we had year-to-date receipts in the general fund of $176.9 million and year-to-date expenditures of $132.5 million. For the general fund, February-ending unencumbered fund balance, we ended at $214.7 million. For all funds for February, we had year-to-date receipts of $237.8 million and year-to-date expenditures of $212.5 million. We ended with unencumbered fund balance for all funds at $256.4 million. For the month of March, we had year-to-date receipts in the general fund of $184.9 million, year-to-date expenditures of $149.6 million, and we ended with an unencumbered general fund balance of $207.2 million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $251.5 million, year-to-date expenditures of $234.9 million, and we ended with an unencumbered fund balance for all funds at $249.1 million. And that's what I have for the financial report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the revised appropriations for fiscal year 2024?
So moved? Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you talk to us about this too?
Yes. So, we have several adjustments due to changes in grant allocations. We also received some additional local grants that we're increasing the appropriations for, and we had some budget requests, revisions in our district-managed, so our student activity accounts. And that's what's on the adjustments for this month.
Any comments or questions? Seeing none, Ms. Marshall, will you?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D1 and Board Policy 6320?
So moved? Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Yes. So, just a reminder, these are what we call the "now purchase orders." This is where we have a purchase order that is dated after an invoice date. Anything in the excess of $3,000 requires Board approval before it can be paid. In this case, we had a purchase order that was opened due to a change order, so it was after the fact. All of the funds are within budget, so I do recommend that the Board approve this purchase so that we can get the vendor paid.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? All right.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And is it okay if I take personal consent all at once? And may I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda 8.01 through 8.10?
So moved? Second.
And Mr. Cooper, welcome.
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Superintendent Hamburg. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, leave-of-absence, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. We have one staff member who has announced her retirement on this evening's agenda. Kimberly Desmoix will be retiring at the end of this school year with 33 years of service to our district. We appreciate all she's done for our students and certainly wish her the best in her years of retirement ahead. At this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments?
No questions. I just think I want to block the door and not let Kim leave. She's an amazing teacher and has done wonderful things in this district.
Yeah, just a big thank you to her. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And now, old business, moving along to new business. We have the first reading of Policy 2430.01. And Ms. Baldwin?
Good evening, Ms. Meyer, members of board, Superintendent Hamburg, and Ms. Marshall. I am happy to be here to represent our teaching and learning team with a policy recommendation to update our guest speaker policy and for greater efficiency for buildings and classroom teachers to secure guest speakers, changing the timeline from 90 days for prior approval to 15 days. So, some flexibility there. And then, our suggested activities would be presented to the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning or Designee. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, makes sense.
All right, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have the first reading of employment of substitutes, and Mr. Cooper is joining us again.
Hello once again, should have just stayed up here. With regard to the first reading of Policy 3120.04, employment of substitutes, the suggested additional language includes a change from House Bill 33 that the district may employ individuals enrolled in the educator preparation program in colleges and universities, such as our student teachers. These individuals will be required to fulfill all of the requirements of our substitutes, including successful background checks and being employed through our Educational Service Center. Additionally, the district will coordinate with relevant universities and colleges to ensure their students are permitted to substitute and allowed to be compensated for that substitute work. Additional recommendation within this policy is to update current language with regard to pay and benefits for substitutes employed for more than 60 consecutive days in one specific assignment. This language adjusts the threshold from 120 days of the consecutive substitute service in one position to 60 to align with Ohio Revised Code.
Any questions or comments?
One question. I'm very pleased to see these changes. As you look at the change from the 120 to 60, do you have any sense of kind of a typical rough ballpark idea of how many? rough ballpark idea of how many subs that would affect in a year?
Yeah, typically within about three to five, I would say is a normal amount.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, sure thing.
Thank you. Oh, and you might as well just stay here. So, the first reading of the termination and resignation. Mr. Cooper?
Is it okay to address both of these since?
Oh, yeah.
To 3140, 3140, so they are parallel language there. So, regarding these first readings for termination and resignation of certified staff, 3140, and 4140, termination and resignation of our classified staff members, additional language is recommended to reflect changes in House Bill 33. Once again, this language ensures the district obtains proof that any notice of termination has been received by the individual. The suggested language in each of these two policies is the same.
Any questions or comments? Makes sense to me.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have a bunch of transportation first readings, policies. And we're going to invite Mr. Snyder up to talk to us about 10.05 through 10.08. And Randy, please.
Thank you, President Meyer, members of the Board, Ms. Hamburg, and Ms. Marshall. Before you tonight, the first policy recommended for revisions and updates is Policy 8600, which really is our principal policy for our district in regards to school transportation. It's recommended for review according to the NEOLA recommendations and Board policy. A noted adjustment in particular is regarding the name change from the Ohio Department of Education to the Ohio Department of Education workforce. And another notable adjustment is references to vehicles other than school buses, as we know, as the Board and the community knows, that's referring to our MyVan program. This policy was originally adopted in December of 2009 and was revised on December 12th of 2022, as well as most recently, the following year, December 11th of 2023. I'm pleased to share and continue to promote that Westerville's transportation policies and administrative guidelines to continue to exceed the state minimum requirements for our community. It's our recommendation that this policy be revised as presented this evening.
Any questions or comments?
And then, Policy 8600.04 regarding driver certifications. This policy is recommended again for review according to our current Board policy and NEOLA recommendations. This policy was originally adopted on December 14th of 2009 and revised in February 12th of 2018. There are references, again, in this revised policy referencing the name change of the Ohio Department of Education, Department of Education workforce. I'm pleased to say that Westerville's training program for both our school bus drivers and MyVan drivers continue to exceed the Department of Education and workforce minimum standards. And therefore, we are recommending tonight that the Board approve that policy.
Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, we can move along to Policy 8640.
8640, our next policy up for revisions, is our transportation for non-routine trips, oftentimes referred to as field trips for extracurricular and co-curricular activities. This policy is recommended for review and updating, again, according to our current Board policies, NEOLA recommendations, and needed language housekeeping to align this policy with updates to the Ohio Administrative Codes and Revised Codes. This policy was adopted initially on December 14th of 2009. Westerville City Schools continues to support and provide access to our extracurricular and co-curricular activities through district-provided transportation. And our Transportation Services Team supports over 2,000 co-curricular and extracurricular trips each school year, most of which these bus or these trips involve more than one driver or school bus. Just a note for today alone, we have 21 drivers out tonight supporting 18 trips throughout our district for our high schools and middle schools today. And it is recommended that the Board of Education approve Policy 8640 as presented.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. And the last one, 8650?
Policy 8650, transportation by vehicles other than school buses, closely related to the previous policy I just referenced. Policy 8650 is recommended for review and updated according to current Board policy, NEOLA recommendations, again, needed language housekeeping to align this policy with updates to the Ohio Administrative Code and Revised Code. Policy 8650 was adopted initially on December 14th of 2009, and this policy as presented aligns with the languages applicable with Ohio Administrative and Revised Codes. It is our recommendation that the Board approve this policy as presented.
Any questions or comments? I have an unrelated to these policies, but it had me thinking about how many routes we have where we bus students to private schools and charter schools.
Certainly. Our St. Paul routes that are paired with our Magnet routes totaled 22 buses that serve those three schools together. And then, we have seven additional buses that provide service to nine non-public, community, and private schools.
And so, when we are, when we're short bus drivers, we know that we, you know, we have early release for high school and middle schools. Does that impact the private and charter schools? I know some are on the Magnet buses, so not all of them. But by law, do we still have to transport them per the time that they need to?
Yes, we do. Our district has the ability to adjust our school days as necessary, like you referenced, the early releases to cover our routes. However, we don't have that authority allowed to us to adjust, if you will, on the fly a private or non-public or community school day based on transportation needs.
I think a lot of people probably don't understand that in our community. And at some point, it'd be really great to have a presentation and fully understand some of the, what we do, how many routes, and just the constraints.
Certainly, I could work with Mr. Dorn and Mrs. Dennis to prepare an update and a presentation on that topic, for sure.
Thank you so much.
Pleasure, thank you.
All right. Moving along to standing business. And may I have a motion to approve these wonderful donations as presented?
So moved? Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Yes, so this month, you have a little over $18,000 in donations that bring our year-to-date, fiscal year-to-date total up to $238,747.44. We're, we have a very generous community, and it's definitely reflected here. I did just want to make a note, we do have one of the donations. The Westerville Progressive Alliance did a sort of a campaign to collect funds for negative lunch balances for some of our senior, for our senior high school students. And we have an attached list along with that. So, the WPA donated, and then we also have several individuals that donated as part of that. So, that is an attachment to the agenda there. Just want to make sure you saw that.
Thank you. Any comments or questions?
Just thank you so much for all these generous donations.
Yeah.
Each and everyone.
Great community. Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the out-of-state overnight field trips? The many.
So moved? Second.
And Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. There are many overnight field trips, out-of-state, out-of-country field trips on the agenda tonight. I just want to point out that for all of these trips, no school days will be missed. The majority of them are for the 25, 26, or 26 school years. Proving these early allow for our teachers and EF tours to actually spend some time recruiting kids to fulfill these trips. We do have two going this summer that are on tonight's agenda, one to Italy and one to Japan. But outside of that, these are all way down the road.
I like the early planning. Any comments or questions?
Dorn, are you going with them?
Not on any of them, no. I apologize.
Sorry about that.
All right. Yeah, thank you.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion, or may I have a motion for a resolution to suspend Robert's Rules of Order?
So moved? Second.
Great. And we are going to be talking about the Facility Master Plan.
We need to vote.
Oh, yeah, sorry. We do need to take a vote on that.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Apparently, I was really excited. Welcome.
We can go for excitement. Mr. Schwartz, did you not want to join us this evening?
Is he not? He doesn't want to come up. Mrs. Dennis, and Mr. Schwartz, and Mr. Dorn. He's trying to stay away.
Let's be very clear, all this work.
Doesn't want to answer the questions.
He's heavily involved.
My part was last time.
If I was an active listener, that's hard for me.
We recognize that, too.
Sorry, I thought it was in the audience.
Is the doctor away?
For the Board President, yes.
Welcome.
All right, good evening. At the March, I don't know if you can hear me, who can hear me. So, at the March 18th, Board Agenda Work Session, Mr. Dorn, Mr. Schwartz, and I shared updates on the capital projects that have finished, the ones we're planning, upcoming, and the status of our current Facility Master Plan work. Along with the planning of the second phase of the Facility Master Plan, at that time, I recommended that the Board consider amending the second phase of the Facility Master Plan, largely related to the inflationary cost of construction versus when the plan was originally created. The amended phase would address the buildings' construction in the 1960s. So, that would include Charrington, Huber Ridge, Blunden Middle School, and Walnut Springs Middle School. And a new phase would be created to address the buildings in the 70s to include Mark Twain, Robert Frost, and then Westerville North. At that meeting, the Board asked us to seek feedback about the potential changes in the upcoming committee meetings. Excuse me. I had the opportunity to share the presentation with the Finance Committee on April 1st and the Strategic Planning Committee on April 10th. Mr. Dorn shared the presentation with the Westerville Parent Council on April 17th. The feedback we received was overwhelmingly in support of amending the second phase of the Facility Master Plan, in understanding that it was largely based on cost. We also have received the estimated project costs from Alfred, who we have been working with on the estimates along with the potential project timelines, which everyone wants to know how long it's going to take. Their estimates, estimates have totaled just under $134 million for those first four buildings, the buildings constructed in the 1960s. Those estimates include escalation contingencies, so continuing to see any changes in that, along with design contingencies. We would like to continue to investigate the cost of the expansion of the ELC versus an alternative site, which did come up in the theme in some of the feedback we received, along with defining the work and getting cost estimates for the performing arts spaces, stadium support spaces, parking lot playground work, to consider using existing funds to fund those projects. We plan to still address the need for gym walls at Mark Twain and Robert Frost Elementary School. We have upcoming projects at McVeigh, Wilder, and Heritage Middle Schools for their balconies as well. Through capital planning, we address those projects. We now, we know the asks need to be reasonable for our community to support this work. We have bond millage coming off, so I'll refer to Mrs. Marshall to discuss that.
Thank you, Mrs. Dennis. So, as we've discussed previously, the, we have a 2,000 bond issue that has bonds rolling off. The millage that's collecting today, according to the county auditor, is right around 1.7 mils, so our payments about $6.3 million a year. We do have the opportunity to, with a new ballot issue, we could ask our voters to support a sort of a no-new millage situation that would let us generate right around $140 million, which would be enough to take care of the four buildings that we were talking about based on Alfred's estimates. So, as we move forward, and we have our work session in May, and we update the five-year forecast, I'd like to have those conversations through that work session to figure out how we can maybe use some existing resources for the other things so that we're not going back to our community for additional millage ask with the bond issue.
Mrs. Dennis, could you give just a quick update in case somebody is just catching this and didn't watch the initial meeting? Although, I would encourage folks to go back and watch the March 18th work session of how we would address those other three buildings in the next phase. And specifically, I know we've gotten a lot of questions even in the feedback about how we would pay for the North project.
Absolutely. So, we would look for a bond ask to support the work of the next two buildings as well. And those would be Mark Twain and Robert Frost, along with needing to have community support for any work that would be done at North. Even when we become eligible for the CFAP funding, Classroom Assistance Facility... Facility Assistance Program, got those letters out of whack there.
Could you just explain that real, really quickly? Because there may be people in the audience that don't know what that is.
Yep, yep. So, in 2019, we joined the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission's Expedited Local Partnership Program. What that meant is, at the time, with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, we were not eligible for funding at that time. So, we opted to go in and go ahead and start the work. We take credits on the approved work based on the Ohio Classroom Design Manual. And it basically sits as a credit that just kind of waits for us to become eligible. And that eligibility is based upon funding that the state provides to the OFCC. So, when you become eligible, that's when you are considered CFAP-eligible, Classroom Facility Assistance Program-eligible. Our district is at a 35% match, so 35 cents of every dollar of design work that's in the manual. So, we have right now, with the work that has been completed in the Phase 1 of the Facility Masterwork that's been approved by the OFCC, roughly $24 million in credits. We'll have additional credits for the work that will be completed this summer. And then, any work that's done in this potentially amended second phase of the Facility Master Plan credits, hopefully, we become eligible by the time North becomes up to us. So, let's say that that is double what we have now at $48 million that we could apply towards a project like Westerville North, a segment of the work that we're doing in our Facility Master Plan. And when you become eligible, they take that 35 cents on the dollar off the top of the project at that time. So, that's what we would look to do to fund a project like North, understanding that there's still a lot of concept around what we do with North, given what I presented in that, with the 76% of the educational spaces not having any access to natural light and modular wall systems that were used during different phases of that building's additions and reconstruction. So, it's best to kind of delay that work. Did I answer that fully?
You did. I would just add to that from a timeline, because I know we've been asked a lot about that, that we did have a meeting with the state, and we're now 29th on the list. So, if you want to talk a little bit about kind of how that works, maybe?
Yeah, so 29 sounds long, right? Don't be discouraged by that. There are typically districts who become eligible and will defer their eligibility at that time. So, they can kind of see back and forth. They can't guarantee us anything, they can't tell you it'll be X date in this year. But they do continue to share with us that we're looking at somewhere in that five-year range. Potentially, no promises, I don't know. We'll keep working towards that. Mrs. Marshall did ask a really great question at that meeting. If you don't mind me, you can go ahead and share what you asked.
So, I have worked with the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission for a long time, but I had been asking them for as long as I've been with the district, you know, how far out are we? And it's always been five, six, seven years. So, I asked them, so if we come up with eligibility, but we already have all of our projects done, and we are sitting on a $50 million credit, will you just write me a check so that I can pay back our bonds with that?
By me, she means the Board of Education.
Yes. That's what, that was the question. And they said yes. So, they don't know how that would work exactly, but they do think that that would be due to Westerville, and that's what, if it got to that. Hopefully, our time would come up. I do have concerns about some of the conversation that our state legislators are having around providing capital dollars for private schools. I do think that that could potentially slow down our eligibility timeline, so.
Very concerning.
It is.
And so, you mentioned Mark Twain and Robert Frost as another bond, but we're talking, just for clarification purposes, we're not talking, we're talking like five years out.
Correct.
Yeah.
We would look at a similar, this phase of work to be a five-year plan. And when, within that five-year plan, we're starting to look at the next five-year plan. We believe overall that this Facility Master Plan is starting to develop an ongoing five-year plan as we move forward, just to make sure that we are keeping with our community current on the status of our buildings.
And I know there is some... And I know there is some comments and questions about the safety in Robert Frost and Mark Twain. And you had mentioned we're going to be putting some walls up to try to make sure that they are safe during voting periods.
Yeah, so Robert Frost and Mark Twain's elementary school gymnasium still remain open to the building. And the Board of Elections in statute has the right to use our buildings regardless of how we feel about it. So we recognize this to be a challenge at those locations, and we believe it's important to go ahead and address that sooner rather than later.
We'd just add to that. So we are looking at it from a facility standpoint, but just so our parents are aware, we are also talking with the Board of Elections, encouraging for some alternative sites in the meantime. So we are looking at that from some different angles, too.
I do think it's important to share, too. In that conversation with our consultant from the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission, I asked if there was a resolution, a resolution specific to amending that second phase of facility master work, because the board did approve a resolution to re-enter that work. And there is not a resolution specific. So that is at the local level. When you make the decision to support that amendment, we would just notify them. So there's no formal resolution required at this time.
Nicole, do you want to give a little bit of background when we talk about the possibility of a no-new millage for a bond? And that was a 2,000 bond issue, right? And give a little bit more info on that. You know, where are we collecting it now? And what would a no-new millage mean for the community?
So it's a current bond issue that's been in place since 2000. We are making payments to that on those bonds every year. And so when, if the community passes a new bond issue, instead of that millage falling off, it would remain at its current level. So the millage wouldn't change going forward. So as we have looked at the facilities master plan, I came into the district in 2018. The district had already gone through numerous, numerous facilities master planning committee meetings and had a plan and priorities in place and all that. And so my job when I got here was, how do we pay for it, right? The plan was already there, but how do we, how do we get that done? And so we looked at, with Westerville South, we issued some certificates of participation using our current PI dollars. So that was using existing resources from a levy already approved by our voters. We discussed the first five years with the 2019 bond issue. So that was for $103 million. And it was estimated on the ballot at 1.95 mils. We've never collected that at 1.95 mils. I think when it came on in 2021, it was probably closer to, I don't know, 1.2 mils, something like that, because of the way values work. And I have a whole presentation on this, if anybody's ever interested in hearing about it. So, but at that time, when we looked at what we had coming off in terms of millage, so we just had another former issue that just dropped off. I, I don't know that anybody really noticed it, but it was around a half a mil that came off of the tax rolls. And that was from another bond issue from years back. And so we have seen, we knew this was coming. This has been part of the timeline. We knew that we would have this drop off. It's coming in 2027, but we're able to structure the debt that will allow us to capture that with level payments that won't, that our voters won't see a difference with the millage. So we knew this was coming. This has sort of been the plan all along. We were actually originally intending on being on the ballot last November. But, you know, all the things with COVID and everything that happened. And so this is where we are with the phasing of the work. And I think the construction inflation, you know, we built our new elementary school that opened, Minerva France Elementary, opened in '22, '23 for $18 million. To build that same school today, it would be closer to $36 million. So it's almost doubled. So that's a significant reality that we're dealing with as we look towards the future. And we want to be mindful of our community. And we know that we can't continue to put more and more on them. And so we do want to make sure that we stay within that, to not add any more for the bonds.
I think it's a delicate balance, though, right? Like, we've got to meet the needs of what the students need and our staff. And then just keep the community in mind. And it's really hard.
Yeah.
I do like the amendment of the plan. Makes sense to me. I'm supportive of it.
I like it as well. During the presentation, the initial presentation, I was very concerned about the cost, the potential cost to the community. And looking at it in the way that, you know, our thoughts are evolving and getting that input from people about what is feasible, what is not feasible as regards what the community needs from us, as well as what we need from the community, obviously. But making the change to the plan and focusing on the bond issues rolling off so that we don't place additional burden, bond burden, on the community, I think, is the most appropriate way to look at this, especially when you balance that with the potential for state dollars to come in, potential, down the road. And hey, haven't we moved up? Aren't we like 80-something on the list? And now we're up to 29? So we are making significant progress. So that, and I know, never bet on what the legislature is going to do. But at this point in time, that idea of using a no-new millage for the bond and looking at how we can capture as much from state resources as possible is, in my mind, the most prudent way that we go about achieving this funding. The other component that I think is extremely important, and I want to go back to it, is the utilization of existing funds. That's another big piece as we look at how we structure the facilities plan, how we structure operating dollars, all of those pieces going forward. We're going to have to pay really close attention to what we do with the existing fund balance. So as we look at how that might work, I'm interested in your thoughts about what and how we might use some of those monies and how that might impact our ongoing capital improvements.
Ready?
Yeah, yeah. We got rid of Robert's rules, so you can just jump in whenever.
Just checking. So I think that, you know, it's very important for us to make sure that we've, money that we've already received or are currently receiving from our community is being used in the most appropriate way. There are several items that we can address by using existing funds. So while the bond millage that may drop off, that will drop off, may generate, I don't know, $140 million. And we know these projects are estimated at $134 million. There leaves a little bit of a gap there that some of this work can be addressed through. But also addressing some of these other things, we know that we have needs right now. We have needs to improve our performing arts spaces right now. We have needs to take a look at our existing, but also some additional support spaces at our stadiums. Things like locker rooms and restrooms, just very basic items. We're also talking about, is this the right time to go through the district and replace all of our T8 light bulbs with LEDs? And then use some of that savings that we generate to pay for those projects? So we've got a lot of things in front of us that are open for us to do. And we just, we're just looking for that nod of commitment to allow us to move forward.
I did just want to make mention that as we are sitting here talking about all of the funding needs for the district and having to go back to the taxpayers of this district, that this is in part due to the fact that the state legislature does not fully fund their share of the public school systems in Ohio. And we would love to have community help in contacting those state legislators to help ensure that they continue to implement the fair school funding program. There is no budget, they're not doing budget negotiations this year. They will be doing budgets next year in 2025. But if you need to know who your state legislators are, let us know.
I really appreciate all the work that's gone into this. And the very, I agree. I think it's a very thoughtful approach where, as Ms. Davidson said, we're balancing the needs of our community and the needs of our staff and our students. So I appreciate it, and I'm supportive of moving forward with that approach. I don't really have any other questions.
So Louise, I know this is a ton, coming in, kind of getting up to speed, figuring out what we did in the past, where we're going. Do you have any concerns? I mean, funding, yes, but.
Yes, aside, aside from funding, no. I think this all makes sense.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So it sounds like we're all supportive.
Thank you. Got a lot of work to do now.
Thank you. This is, this is sound. And I appreciate it. You know, I've got the points right here. The adjustment of the plan, the no-new millage, the use of existing funds, the leveraging our projects for state dollars and to complete local projects. Those components make strong fiscal sense. And they do a lot of what we need to do.
I do just want to mention, with setting the bond amount at the $140 million, we will have a resolution before the board to, so that they can get started on some of the work. So it will be like a reimbursement resolution that we can.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Dennis, and Mr. Schwartz, and Mr. Dorn. Appreciate the team's work on all of that. I know it's a lot. All right. May I have a motion to approve the resolution to reinstate Robert's Rules of Order?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Marshall? Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes. And we are to board comments. Who'd like to go first?
Well, I actually came prepared with a legislative update today. Periodically, we like to share some of the things that are going on at the state legislature that might impact public education in our district in particular. So I wanted to make mention of a few things. Governor DeWine held his annual State of the State on 4/10, and a few things came up out of that impacting public education. So I shouldn't say it. They haven't impacted it yet, but he's requesting for it. So he has a request in for the Department of Education workforce to create an apprenticeship program for school principals to help address a need for more K-12 principals in the state. He also put out a request for the state legislature to implement an additional requirement for graduation, that the students participate in career planning to identify a clear path post-graduation. There are already some existing programs that engage both the parents and students, so we'll see if there's further details that develop there. He also encouraged districts around the state to work with state agencies and with existing district resources to move towards a, what is called a school-based clinical model. So a handful of districts have implemented this school-based clinical model in areas where residents may not have ready access to primary health care as a way to address those needs within the schools. It's been proven to increase attendance, grades, GPA, reduce number of suspensions. But no further, it sounds like no further dollars would be added for that. It was simply an encouragement. He also highlighted that we should expect a bill soon requiring all districts to create a smartphone policy to minimize use during school. And I know this has been called out by some of our parents. So we'll look forward to seeing what that bill looks like. So nothing has materialized on any of these requests. There are no bills currently going through. He just held this on 4/10. So we should probably look to expect some of these coming in the coming months. One more thing to report from the state legislature. HB 183, so House Bill 183, which is, I guess, known as a transgender bathroom bill, introduced by State Rep. Beth Lear and State Rep. Bird, did pass out of committee that would require all schools to have biological males using men's and boys' restrooms, biological females using women's and girls' restrooms, locker rooms, changing rooms, et cetera. This passed out of House Committee of Higher Education on 4/10. It passed out of higher education, but it applies to all schools, not just universities. It would be K-12 as well. Lot of questions still around on this one. How would it be enforced? How would we, you know, identify trans students? So more to come on this, but this did pass out of committee, and we'll see if it gets a floor vote. So that is it.
Just real quick, I want to thank all of our award winners tonight. It was delightful to have everyone here this evening. Congratulations to Kim DeMoy. She will desperately be missed here. And I think that's it for me. Just thank you to the Facilities Committee coming together and presenting again tonight and letting us talk about it. I really appreciate that time. So thank you.
Allah, ditto, all that. And then I'm just going to add one last thing, too, since Ms. Marshall brought it up. President Huffman has stated publicly he is interested in using public tax dollars for private school facilities. So instead of those dollars going to public schools for construction costs, as we talked about, he would send some amount of money to private schools for construction costs. We already send $1 billion of public taxpayer dollars to fund private schools at the expense of our real needs in our public school districts. So if you feel inclined, please reach out to your legislators now and tell them to keep our public taxpayer dollars funding our public schools. Ms. Marshall? Oh, yeah. Our next meeting. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, May 6, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center, 936 East Wind Drive, Westerville, Ohio, which is here. It's hard to believe that we're almost in May. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Right now? Yes, now.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.